John? Good evening. Welcome to the Wareham Planning Board meeting, regularly scheduled meeting for Monday, September 22nd, 2025, being held in the Multi Service Center Room 520, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, and being broadcast by Wareham Media on Zoom and TV. I'm going to start the meeting by having a roll call. Jane, I'm going to start with you.
Present, here.
Can you say your name? You're going to have to state your name every time because you're on Zoom.
Yes, Jane Gleason, here.
Sam Corbett, aye.
And Carl Schultz, aye. Julie Moran is traveling and Mike Baptiste is ill. We do have three members, so I'm going to declare that we have a quorum and that the meeting is open at 6:01. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes for September 8th. We also have open minutes for August 25th. We do not have those meeting minutes available tonight for review, so they will be deferred till the meeting in October. I will note that the two meetings in October are going to be held on the first and third Mondays of October. That's the 6th and the 20th because of the holiday and town meeting. So, anyone who's interested in planning board meetings, first and third Mondays in October. Okay, first item of business.
Actually, Carl, can I interrupt for half a second? We do have one project on this agenda that I see from the matrix at the back of, on the second page of the meeting notes from last meeting that was supposed to be not until, I believe, the 9th or the 6th.
The 6th, that was scribbles, right? I was going to mention that.
And I was just thinking that if we did that early, then if anybody's sitting there, they're not waiting through other stuff.
Item, item four, under Continued Public Hearings, was listed as a meeting for tonight, but it was not really supposed to be on the agenda. That's a scribner's error, so we will not be taking up Scribbles Learning Center this evening. Thank you, Jane.
Yep, I just didn't want people sitting there.
Okay, again, so then the first item of the agenda, under Preliminary Business, 13-25/Plan-25-14, Hamilton Beach Association, A&amp;R 0 and 19 Worrell Avenue. Come forward, please state your name. For the record, spell your name, please.
Leoni, L-E-O-N-E.
And you're an engineer?
I'm with Schneider-Dvignan and Leoni.
Are you a professional engineer?
I am a land surveyor.
Okay. You're a professional, you're going to make professional testimony?
Yes.
Please stand and raise your right hand.
Okay.
State your name and aye.
Aye.
Your name.
Matthew Leoni.
Do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you so much. All right, so welcome. So, we'll let you make your presentation and we'll, we'll have a discussion.
Okay, great. Again, Matt Leoni with Schneider-Dvignan and Leoni, here tonight on behalf of Hamilton Beach Association, and David and Paula Cloud with an Approval Not Required Division Plan of Land. The property is located on the south side of Worrell Avenue, and it abuts the Wareham River. The Cloud property, known as Lot 10, on Wareham Assessors Map 50F, which I have here highlighted in yellow, it's approximately 6,943 square feet. The lot has along its border with Hamilton Beach. Hamilton Beach property is map 50F, Lot 1049, and is shown here in green. And just to give the board a little bit of context.
Can you, just, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. Just to give the board a little context, this is the Hamilton Beach Association property that's utilized for beach access and recreational access for its members. The lot in question, Lot 10, here, is shown here in yellow. This is Worrell Avenue, just to give you a little bit more of a zoom out of the, of the project area. Along the border between Lot 10, the Cloud property, and the Hamilton Beach Association property, there is a stone and masonry seawall that has been in place for several years, dating back at least to the 1950s, that we have testimony to how long it's been there. The seawall is in disrepair, and the Clouds, owner of Lot 10, are looking to make some repairs and do some reconstruction to the seawall. During the course of our survey, we discovered that portions of the wall, as originally constructed, were on the Hamilton Beach Association property. And in order to maintain the existing seawall network and to minimize the impacts of the project, the repairs and reconstruction is proposed in the same location as it is, as it is today. And it has been agreed by Hamilton Beach Association and the Clouds to convey this encroaching area to the Clouds, to the Clouds, to, to clean up the, the encroachment. The encroachment area is shown in, in orange here. It is labeled as parcel A on our plan, and it's approximately, encompasses about 724 square feet. In addition to, the plan depicts a easement area that will be utilized to allow passage of personnel during the reconstruction and cleaning up of the wall. And that easement's approximately 1,026 square feet, and that'll be subject to the terms and agreements as, as they, as they come forward. The conveyance parcel is not to be considered a separate building lot, and the division will not result in a change to the frontage or access to either property as it exists today.
Thank you. Is that your complete testimony?
That's our, that's our presentation, yes.
Thank you. I have a list of questions, but do you have questions, Sam?
Conservation been notified?
They have been, and I believe we have a, a plan on record with them. I'm not sure, I believe it has been approved by conservation.
Jane?
I'm just curious about whether the new piece of property that you're looking to convey to the private homeowner will negatively impact the association's use of the beach for its full length.
Well, the, the, the limits of the conveyance parcel are along the existing seawall, and so that there is no change really to what's existing, as an existing condition out there right now. Everybody had always believed that that was the limit of the property, but we discovered through the course of our survey that actually the wall did encroach further into the, into the Hamilton Beach property.
So, does the southern, so does this property, this new parcel, fully cross and, you know, separate one side from the other of the Hamilton Beach, the association property? Or does it just go into it and it still continues uninterrupted across?
The latter. It, it, it just, it just kind of bows in and, and makes kind of like a U shape, but the Hamilton Beach Association property would still all be, be as it is today, really.
Be continuous to the south side of that?
That's correct.
Before you get to the water line?
That's correct.
Okay. I think that was really the only question that I had.
Well, that, just to further on that question, the, the high water line does touch the base of the wall as it exists today.
So, is there any form of an easement in that the property that you're looking to convey below the seawall, for, to the south of the seawall? Is there any sort of easement that the residents can walk on that property?
South of the seawall? Am I sure that, right now, it is encompassed by the, by the wall itself.
Right, but it looks like, from what, I, I don't have the drawings in front of me, but what I recall of the drawings is that the seawall is inboard of the southern boundary of the property. And the southern boundary of the property, you've left a, a sort of swath to the south of the, the wall, so that there's room for the people working on it to have space to work.
Yes, that would be the area in blue. Yeah.
Right, and that, so the property from the seawall to the south, to the southern boundary of the part that you're, the parcel that you're trying to convey, is, is there an easement of, of some sort that the, the residents of the, you know, the members of the association can actually walk on that property, south of the seawall?
Well, the.
On the, not on the Clouds lawn, but on the, on the beach?
They would have, they would have access, anywhere from the toe of the wall to the, to the sea, they would have access to walk.
Okay, that's, okay, that was my question.
Okay.
Okay, so I have a series of questions.
Sure.
The first question regarding, regarding frontage compliance. The Wareham Zoning Bylaw in Table 621 requires a minimum of 150 feet frontage for a single family lot in the R30 district. Your plan shows that Lot 10 will have 100 feet of frontage. Can you explain how this plan meets the requirement of Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81L, which requires that every lot on an A&amp;R must have frontage equal to the, that required by the zoning bylaw?
Well, this is not, we are not changing the existing conditions, this is a existing non-conforming lot?
The, the A&amp;R requires that in order to be granted as an A&amp;R, every lot has to have adequate frontage on an approved way. As I understand the law.
As I understand, this is a conveyance parcel that is not changing the access or frontage to, to either of the lots as they exist?
You can't do that. I'm, my conclusion is this is going to be a subdivision, subject subdivision control law, because I don't believe it meets the requirements for A&amp;R. But what's, so you, you're saying you don't, it doesn't meet the requirement and of 100 foot frontage, you don't believe it needs to?
Neither lot, the Hamilton Beach Association nor the existing lot meets the current zoning requirement.
Okay, which I believe the law, in order for this to be considered an A&amp;R, says that the lots do. Okay.
Well, the, the lot, again, the endorsement of the A&amp;R does not, does not give conformance to zoning.
It can't be considered an A&amp;R unless it has adequate frontage on an approved way. Now, that's going to be my next question. Do you have certification that Worrell Avenue is an approved way? It's listed as a private way?
Yes.
It's not an approved way by the town clerk. It doesn't meet, does it meet the 22-foot, all the conditions for an approved way in the town?
It's a paved way, I do not, I would not, I don't have on the plan here exactly.
You know how wide it is? Is it 22 feet?
The layout is 40, but, or, excuse me, I think it's 30, but I don't know how, how wide the pavement is.
Okay. All right, so those are my concerns, so. Any other questions, Jane? I'm going to ask for a motion.
Well, I, I would. I guess I'm, I'm curious whether those rules that you're referring to apply to a parcel as opposed to a lot. This is a parcel.
It's an A&amp;R, it applies to the A&amp;R. And there's a condition, there's three conditions, has to be in an approved way, has to meet the frontage requirements. There's just a different avenue for them to do this. I'm not saying they can't do it. You, you guys can decide. I, I voiced my concern in my opinion.
I believe it's a private road.
There, those are two of the three conditions, but I'm going to ask for a motion and I'm going to, I'm requesting a motion. I move that the board finds that the plan entitled, Approval Not Required Plan, Hamilton Beach Association, Inc., dated September 10th, 2025, shows a division of land resulting in Lot 10 having 100 feet frontage. Oh, wait, before I go, there's one more question I meant to ask.
Yes.
Is this an approved subdivision before 1951?
Yes.
Do you have evidence of that?
I, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a plan on record before 1950.
But it was not submitted with the application. So, the other.
It did not go before the planning board, no.
Right. But if it was, but, but if you, your, your other option, before I make this motion, is you could withdraw the A&amp;R application and then come back and submit that this is, that lot, that road, Worrell Avenue, was created as part of a subdivision plan before 1951, and then these requirements don't apply.
It, it was, it was, exists on a plan prior to 1955.
You have to show, you have to, do you have evidence that it was a subdivision created before 1951?
I have the plan.
It hasn't been submitted yet. So, the other option is.
No, no, I mean the, the subdivision plan that creates all the lots, it was drawn in 1915.
Okay, was that submitted? I didn't see it. It wasn't submitted as part of the application? Okay, well, that's why I'm giving you the option. So, the other, and unfortunately Josh is not here last, tonight. Quasid Island, stamped. Let me read that. Yeah, I'm still not sure that this meets the A&amp;R requirement.
Again, this is a one-lot conveyance, it is not creating any new buildable lots.
That's not what A&amp;R, A&amp;R doesn't even discuss that. There's the three conditions, frontage on an adequate way, meeting the frontage requirements, and those cannot be waived.
It does not need to meet the existing current zoning frontage. It just has to have frontage and adequate access.
It has to meet, the, the law says, as I understand it, and I'm not going to debate the law, there's no lawyers.
I'm not a lawyer either.
So, I'm, I'm, I can only go, and Josh is not here unfortunately to help with that. So, I'm going to make a motion and board, or I request a motion, the board can act as, as, they've heard our discussion.
Okay.
I don't, I'm not clear on the 1915 subdivision. So, I'm going to request a motion that the board finds that the plan entitled, Approval Not Required Plan, Hamilton Beach Association, dated September 10th, 2025, shows a division of land resulting in Lot 10 having 100 feet frontage in the R30 zoning districts, which requires a minimum of 150 feet of frontage per the Wareham Zoning Bylaw. Therefore, the plan depicts a subdivision as defined by Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, 81L. That's the motion. Is anyone willing to make that motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, so now we can, we'll take, we'll vote on the motion. So, so the motion was, we have, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Jane?
I, I want to ask a question. What is the alternative for the applicant?
It's a subdivision. They submit a subdivision plan. So, by, by finding it not an A&amp;R, all we, all, we can't, we, we don't approve or deny, we basically say it, it, it's a subdivision. That's what we're finding, that it requires a subdivision plan, which gives us more control and requirements.
I just don't want to see them forced to put a road to this parcel.
Well, it's Lot 10 that's, that's subject to the frontage. And Lot 10 doesn't meet the frontage requirement.
Well, the, the parcel is coming out of Lot 1049.
Point of order, the motion been made and seconded?
Yes, well, we're, we're discussing, now we're discussing the motion.
Okay.
Here.
And discussing the mechanics of how, how this works.
Again, the, the, if I may? May, may I?
You may.
I may. The, the, the parcel that is being divided is Lot 50F, oh, excuse me, Lot 1049, the Hamilton Beach property. It is not the Lot 10. To the land is coming out of.
That, that lot doesn't have frontage at all, on any way.
It has access through, yeah.
That, and I'm not saying that you can't do what you're trying to do, I'm just saying that A&amp;R is not the appropriate, appropriate vehicle. That's my opinion.
I respectfully disagree, but I, okay, yes.
And that's, and.
So, I guess I'm, I'm confused because this is really a parcel, not a lot, and so the.
We're not, an A&amp;R doesn't, as I read, read it, doesn't give us that.
Doesn't differentiate.
So, I, it just says it's a different vehicle to accomplish what they want to accomplish. And, and again, we don't have Josh, and so I, I gave my opinion.
I mean, to me, a subdivision is going to be about dividing out lots, and it's going to look for a road to access that, this lot, and it's, but it's not a lot, it's a parcel.
So, you're going to, how is your, how are you voting on the motion? I'm saying, the motion that I made or requested was that this is a subdivision, not an A&amp;R. So, a yes vote.
I'm struggling with this being a subdivision. I guess is where I'm going with that.
Then, I'm looking for your vote. We have to vote one way or the other.
Refresh my memory on the, on the language of the motion?
The board finds that the plan entitled, A&amp;R, Hamilton Beach, dated, shows a subdivision land resulting in Lot 10 having 100 feet of frontage on the R30 zoning district, which requires a minimum of 150 feet per the zoning bylaw. A&amp;R, there's three requirements for an A&amp;R. The parcels, the lots, have to have frontage on an adequate way. And none of these lots have frontage on an adequate way. Not the, not the parcel that you're trying to convey, not Lot 10. And it's not clear that Worrell Avenue is an adequate way or that they have frontage. Those are the only requirements we're allowed to consider for an A&amp;R. Not saying the applicant can't do it, I'm just saying there's a different vehicle.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that I agree that a subdivision is the right vehicle, so I, I, I guess I have not looked at this project in, in, from this perspective, and I really would want to dig further into this. I mean, my, from my perspective, when I looked at this project, because it's a parcel, I did not apply all of the, the requirements for setbacks and, and frontage and all of that.
No, no, there's no, there's no setbacks. The A&amp;R only has three requirements.
The frontage being one of them.
And adequate way being the other.
And where the, it's an addition of a parcel to an existing non-conforming lot, I did not see.
I'm not going to make a, you have to, I'm not going to argue the.
Okay, point of order, you call for a vote.
I did, and we're still.
Once you call for a vote, stop. We've gone to council on this.
We can discuss the vote.
Once you make a motion and call for a vote.
Okay, fine, then.
We've gone to council on the call.
I don't remember doing that.
Okay, it was 370 County Road.
Go ahead, Jane, then we need a vote.
So, there was, that was a really long bunch of language for that motion. So, so a yea vote and a no vote mean what?
Okay, so, two points. The language was that long because we've been advised in the past that when we voted on A&amp;Rs, we voted imprecisely. So, we can't approve or deny an A&amp;R. What we can do is either find that it's an A&amp;R or find that it's a subdivision of land, which is why I made the motion the way I did.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Okay, which means you agree it's a subdivision.
Yes. So, she already voted, Carl?
No, she didn't.
Your aye vote means that you agree that it's not an A&amp;R?
Correct. I'm trying to help, that's why.
I'm just trying to move along.
Jane Gleason, aye. We'll move it along.
Okay, and then the chair votes aye. So, then I need a second motion. I need a motion that says, based on the finding that the plan shows a subdivision, I move that the board deny the endorsement of the plan as an approval not required.
So moved.
And I need a second.
Second, and suggest that they come back with a, a subdivision.
Okay, so let's take a vote.
We're done.
No, you didn't, we didn't vote yet. We have a motion and a second.
I made the motion, okay. Sam Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
And the chair votes aye. So, I think that your recourse is just to come back with a subdivision plan.
And what would you like to see on that subdivision plan?
Everything that's required for a subdivision. You can meet with Josh and go over that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next item on the agenda. 3-25/Rick Valenti, Definitive Residential Subdivision Plan, Pierceville Road. Anyone here? Okay. Who's online? Okay, can, can we let them in? Hello?
Hi, good evening. Will Connolly, Zenith Consulting Engineers. So, we're going to be requesting a continuance tonight until the October 6th meeting. We submitted revised plans, and we have not gotten any review comments on the revised plans yet. So, we're going to be requesting a continuance.
Okay. October 6th. So, Jane, all I have for the 6th, you have the calendar, but we have DDO New York.
I just have what we have at the back of this.
DDO New York, we have scribbles. And we'll probably have more discussion on the zoning bylaws.
On the zoning articles.
Okay, so I don't see that the, the calendar's overcrowded. So, I'm looking for a motion to continue 325 Rick Valenti, Definitive Residential Subdivision Plan, Pierceville Road, to the October 6th meeting.
So moved.
I need a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Sam Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you for attending, and we'll.
No, you didn't know, we didn't know this was coming.
We didn't, it, this.
They just showed up.
Yes, sir.
We not agree that this is getting ridiculous.
I, I understand your concern. I, I.
If someone was next week, if they can't get the ducks in row before they build it, I don't have a whole hell of a lot of confidence when they're in the process.
Okay, the, your, your comments and frustrations are acknowledged and considered. The public hearing was continued, so.
So, they change in the number of lots going?
None of that is being discussed. All we're doing is saying they're moving, moving the.
And again, we didn't know that was coming.
Okay, thank you. I do thank you for your participation and for coming. I, I understand your frustration.
Imagine ours.
Okay, that, that was continued. Next item. 325 Plan 25-5, Kevin Welch, Site Plan Review, 2731 Cranberry Highway. Good evening. Afternoon, evening, whatever, whatever it is.
Still light out.
Still light out.
And providing these as information for this.
Thank you. Today, okay. For, for the record, show that, can you state your name and then describe what you just handed us?
Good afternoon. My name is Gabriel Padilla from Grady Consulting. I had just handed.
Spell your name, please.
G-A-B-R-I-E-L, and Padilla, P-A-D-I-L-L-A.
Okay, and then you're going, you're making professional testimony, right?
So I am.
Please stand and raise your right hand. Stand, please. Are you, I'm just trying to. Anyway, right hand, state your name, and do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
So, I swear to tell the truth.
Okay, now read into the record what you just handed us, please.
So, I just provided the board with a copy of the revised plans. The plans were revised due to comments from the fire department. We got those comments last week. We had a bit of confusion on one of the items, which I cleared up with the captain this morning. We did make the updated changes and everything through that conversation. We did send a copy of the response and the plan to the captain, but we haven't received any review comments back, so we will be asking for a continuance until we get that letter. I mean, we believe everyone's ready at this point, but I was. I mean, we believe everyone's ready at this point, but I was told that it was imperative to have that letter.
Okay, yes, great. So you're requesting a continuance?
I am, yes.
Until, until what date?
October sixth.
It's going to get a busy meeting all of a sudden. Okay, so we have a request to continue the meeting of three, wait, I can't read my notes. Four dash twenty-five, Plan twenty-five dash five, Kevin Welch, Site Plan Review, twenty-seven thirty-one Cranberry Highway to October sixth.
Continuance?
Continuance.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Jane Gleason, aye.
Jane Gleason, I heard an aye, and the chair votes aye. Thank you very much for coming, and we hope that we'll have the letter back from the captain so we can close this.
Hopefully we do. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here.
I have a quick question on this. We closed the public hearing at our last meeting for this project.
Not.
Is there any thinking that we may need to reopen it?
It was conditional.
I don't think-
It was conditional, but do you think, is there a possibility that, you know, with, there's, there are going to be new drawings that are coming in?
That's, that's the problem with closing the public hearing before we, I, did we close this one? I know we closed Taco Bell.
We did close it.
Then we can't, we can't really, we can't really accept new, that was the, my argument against closing.
That's why I'm asking that question.
And you can't reopen the public hearing, so now it becomes a modification. That was my whole argument against closing the public hearing.
Understood.
All right, so we're going to continue it for now and, and-
Just to have it on the record, the only changes in the plan were, were to the entrance radius and the, the turning radius on the truck.
I appreciate that. The problem is, once we close the public hearing, we can't take new, I went on the record last time saying if we close the public hearing and new, new material comes in, it has to be a new application, a modification.
Perfect.
All right, well, well-
They closed the hearing conditional on that one piece of paper. I understand your point, but that's what we did, so we can't accept that one piece of paper.
We'll continue it, and we'll get advice of council if we can accept this new piece of paper, but-
Perfect, thank you very much.
Again, thanks for being here. Thank you. Again, that's why I was opposed to closing the public hearing.
But it passed three, three-two.
I know. All right, so we'll, we'll confirm with council that we can do this without jeopardizing anything, and, and again, town planner's not here to advise us. So that was continued.
Have a good day.
Thank you. Mr. Madden, ten dash twenty-five, Plan twenty-five-ten, Conserve Group, Site Plan Review, Six Recovery Road. Welcome.
Welcome, Bill.
How are you all? William F. Madden, GAF Engineering, here on behalf of Conserve.
Great. Do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
The whole truth, too?
The whole truth.
Good, thank you.
With respect to the Conserve Group application for you, we'd like to request a continuance on that hearing. We just received the review letter today and haven't really had an opportunity to digest it and prepare an adequate response.
Okay, thank you. When would you like to continue it, too?
Preference of the board is fine with us, you know, we're-
Can we go to the twentieth?
Could you, could you wait till the twentieth, or, I don't know, I know that there's some urgency.
This one, I would say, is more urgent than the next one that we'll be talking about, but I prefer the sixth through this.
Just thinking that ten-sixth is filling out.
I prefer the sixth for the Conserve.
It's up to the board. I mean, the sixth is no busier than tonight at this point.
Yeah, except that everything's getting continued tonight, so it's shortening up pretty quickly.
It's six now.
I'm deferring to the real chair, so.
Well, if there's a sense of urgency, let's, let's do what we can to accommodate.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to continue. Ten twenty-five, Plan twenty-five-ten, Conserve Group, Inc., Site Plan Review, Six Recovery Road, to the meeting of October sixth.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Jane Gleason. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Jane Gleason, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you for coming.
Thanks very much.
Thanks for coming, Bill.
All right, scribbles, we already noted, shouldn't have been on the agenda. That brings us to the new public hearing. Oh, well, Josh is not here, so we're going to skip the, the, we'll skip over the zoning. All right, I got to read the public hearing.
Is Josh not, not joining the meeting at all?
John, he was planning to be here, but he thought it was going to go longer. He's at FinCom right now.
Okay, so he's coming, he's just coming later.
I hope.
Maybe.
Okay, so-
All right, all right, so. Notice of public hearing. The Wareham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five at six P M. in Room five-twenty of the Wareham Multi Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, oh-two-five-seven-one, to consider petition number twelve-twenty-five for a site plan review from the requirements of Article fifteen, Section fifteen-thirty-two of the Wareham zoning bylaws to Two East Boulevard LLC, care of GAF Engineering, Inc. of two-sixty-six Main Street, Wareham, Massachusetts, proposing to reconfigure the parking lot and development, expansion of off-street parking spaces along the perimeter of the property located at Two East Boulevard, Wareham, Massachusetts, assessor's map, one, Lot Ten Twelve A, in the OV one zoning district. I'm looking for a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
So moved.
I have a motion. Can I get a second from one of you?
Second.
All in favor?
Jane Gleason, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Chair votes aye. So the public hearing is open. Mr. Madden, are you speaking on this?
Yes. I'm William Madden, GAF Engineering, on behalf of the applicant.
And you're going to swear to tell the truth again?
I do.
Thank you.
I'm Bill Madden from GAF. We would also like to continue this hearing, mostly due in part to the incomplete nature of the board. We think that it's important to have the full membership hear the, hear the presentation for the project, and since it's a, a situation where we're trying to fit a project into a community through site plan review, we think it would be more beneficial to have all the members of the board weigh in.
Great.
Into that degree, to that, to that extent, we request a continuance.
Until-
October twentieth.
Twentieth would be good. All right, great. I'm going to accept that motion, just, I want to comment on the record and not for Can you check, I think this should be a site plan review and special permit. We should confirm that, but forward in the next meeting. That's my only request on the, on the record. No, no need for discussion, I just want to clear, clear that up for me.
Okay, we'll be in a position to, to answer that for you at the twentieth, on the twentieth.
So we have a motion to continue till the twentieth?
Respect.
And a, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Jane Gleason, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
And the chair votes aye. And I should have been asking for written requests, but they're on the record, so I think we're okay. All right.
Very good, thank you very much.
Now what?
Do we want to wait for Josh, or what do you want to do?
Can, let me text him?
You can, yeah. All right, so Jane, as chair, I'm going to request that you follow up with the town council about the-
Yeah.
Twenty, can we accept new evidence, given that, I think it constitutes a mod to the plan? I don't know what we're, that was my argument, so I don't know what to do. And by the way, the other project also got a denial from the fire department, even though we closed that public hearing as well.
We didn't close that one.
Huh?
We closed only one.
Taco, well, that, I don't think we closed this one, but you said we did. Taco Bell was the other one.
I'm looking back at my notes here, hang on one second.
While we're waiting for Josh. We just need to be clear, I didn't think we closed this public hearing, but you guys said we did, so I didn't have, I don't have-
So we, we closed, we closed Taco Bell.
Right, that's what I thought, but-
So maybe we did not close, I might, I may be mistaken.
All right, okay, it's not a big deal. I don't think we closed this one, and I think we're going to be fine.
It's actually to our benefit.
Yes. I think for the very reason that I raised the concern, we didn't close-
You are absolutely correct, yes. We closed, we closed Taco Bell, we did not close twenty-seven thirty-one. So that's good, we can take more, more material from it.
I think, I think we're good. I didn't want to get into that. The other thing, I think, we're going to need, given all of your questions, I think we need a session or some advice from council about how to interpret A and Rs. A and Rs are a very confusing piece of law, but as far as, we're just chatting while we're waiting for Josh, so.
For the record, I texted Josh, I told him you needed an answer, but he may be in the middle of the presentation.
Yes, John said he's giving a presentation. We'll wait a couple of minutes, and if we don't hear back, we'll close the meeting. The issue is, we don't have discretion on A and Rs. It's three criteria, and it, and it's not to say that the applicant can't do the project, it just says it's not an A and R. It, they need to-
I'm not sure I agree that it's a subdivision.
That's the only other option. That's what an A and R decision is. Is this a subdivision? I'm saying we, we need to get clarity from council. I've been reading-
Yeah, yeah, no, understood. I'm just, I, I just want to think about this some more.
And you'll remember, we've done a couple of A and Rs where we tried to waffle around it and continued it. We're not allowed to do that. That's why I, I made the motion the way I did, because in the past, we were chastised. Not chastised, but given feedback. All right.
John?
Yes?
Is he still giving a presentation?
Yeah, I just checked with my guy, he's on, he's on the last one that he's giving. He has a question and answer section, so I'm not entirely sure how long that's going to be.
Make a motion adjourned.
Jane, motion on the table?
A second.
All in favor?
Sam Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
And the chair votes aye. The meeting is adjourned at six forty-three. Thank you for coming.
I thought this was going to be a late night.